One person was doing work, the other two people were on YouTube. It looked quite interesting. Radio music that they were playing. And then they stopped the one who was doing work and said, "Look at this."
What's it got for a 13 gallon? Oh, 10, okay.
But literally, that was true, that one student in each group was actually doing something.
That's only 40 bucks, my bad. He's got a 20 gallon.
The other two had headphones on.
First, I'm one of these guys that never looks at tech.
Looking up other stuff. That's because Richfield doesn't block YouTube. I think we block YouTube.
Sure.
Yeah, I'm skeptic.
So did you get, so we got our van from Walzer. We didn't get the Walzer package, you know, it was reduced. All changes and our washers and everything and stuff. Yeah, it wasn't.
It's seven o'clock.
We're getting there. Call this meeting of the Bloomington Board of Education to order. Today is Monday, May 20th. This is a scheduled study session of the school board. So our items are not going to be voted on tonight, but we have three significant matters that we're going to be discussing. Pathways to graduation. We have a request an anti-bullying policy update. And there is news over the weekend about the state initiative or lack of initiative and financing plan for school safety and security and the new technology plan. So item number one is pathways to graduation. Oh, and all members are present except for Nellie Corman, who I'm expecting. She will be here shortly, so all members of the school were to present tonight.
Well, thank you Chairman Culver, Superintendent Fujitaki and members of the board. Dr. Highstead and I are here this evening to provide you with a brief update on the alignment work we're doing related to the district's strategic plan, the pathways to graduation framework and our academic success measures. As all of you are aware, our district's strategic plan really identifies what it is we're trying to achieve, while the pathways to graduation framework identifies how the strategic plan comes to life. If you look closer at the pathways framework, you see that it identifies some key milestones students need to achieve in order to move through successfully in our educational system and graduate college and career-ready. The specific milestones identify the behaviors, the achievement levels and experience each student should attain as they move through our schools, while the indicators are the collection of data that we use to determine how well each student is achieving these identified milestones. As an organization, we also want to evaluate and report on how well we're performing as a whole. And to that end, the district has established success measures which are annually tracked and identify trends. We use them to set goals and evaluate our ability to demonstrate measurable growth. Clearly, it makes sense then that we measure and report what it is we're trying to achieve. So we are currently evaluating our academic success measures to make sure that they align with both the indicators and milestones along the pathways to graduation framework. Dr. Highstead has an example of a kindergarten readiness milestone to share this evening, and it should give you an idea of the work that we're doing in order to create this alignment and is an example of what we intend to bring back to you in the fall. So, Dr. Highstead.
Great. So this slide has quite a bit of information on it. I'll just take you through it one line at a time. The basic idea is we take the indicator that was determined in previous years to be a good indicator of success for kindergarten. And then we look at the milestone and we see how could we adjust the milestone so that it would be in line with the pathways. And the first line, if you look at the first line where it says percentage of beginning kindergarten students scoring at the ready-to-learn level, that is our current success measure indicator. And that indicator was first established quite a few years ago with the original MCA. And Jim Angermeyer did a prediction study and found what score on that EKA predicted proficiency on the third grade reading assessment. So that's been our indicator for a number of years now. I think the whole team established a framework for assessing our progress. You know, the baseline indicated where we started at the time the indicator was established, then our growth category, and then our ultimate vision. And this indicator has, we've seen quite a bit of success over the years. We've almost reached our vision in terms of 90% or more of the students on track for this third grade MCA. Our current 2012-13 data from this past fall indicates that 88% of students are hitting the target for reading and about 86.5% for math. And it would be fine to continue this type of reporting. This is what most districts do is align to the MCA. But the problem is the MCA changes. And we've already had the MCA changed to the MCA II. And then this year, our students are taking MCA III. And every time the MCA changes, then the baseline changes. And so we actually, when the move from MCA to MCA II, we actually made the third grade test easier, at least the cut score easier. And so our, what we thought would be a fairly high indicator of success, the MCA, is actually kind of a low bar. And now I've done some analysis to say, when you look at the pathways, where is that indicator? And it's really kind of at the bottom level there of the chart. Row three, it says on track for two-year technical college, which is really an open enrollment. You don't really have to have high test scores as your only criteria for getting in. But that's about the level that our current on course for kindergarten readiness is at. And so if we look at a pathways approach, we may want to have a high bar as well as the basic bar. So what I'm proposing is that we would look at the college readiness benchmark. I think I mentioned the last time we talked about the pathways that the ACT company did a massive study predicting how students would do in their freshman year in English and in math. And then from that, they worked back and established these benchmarks for getting a B or better in your freshman college. Well, that's the college readiness standard, the ACT college readiness standard. Other districts now are setting their goals based on, I think Moundsview has set a goal based on, and Minneapolis has set a goal based on. So they would have a high standard. But I think it's useful to look at the basic standard and the high standard so that you can see whether we're making progress on both fronts. And so right now, I went back and I looked at the last three years and we actually have seen some progress, incremental progress on this college readiness benchmark. The reading in 2010-11 was at 35.6%, which just edged up a little bit, and now this year we're at 36.5%. But we could track that across time. And what I said as a potential vision there was at least half the students would be ready for, you know, getting a B or better in college. Our baseline would be between 30 and 40 now, and then growth would be 41 to 50. So this is the basic framework I thought I would share with you, get your reactions and think, see if you think this is a useful framework for looking at how our success measures could be linked with the pathways to graduation. So that's what we have prepared.
Yep.
Chris has another slide and we can come back.
Yeah, just to let you know, our intent, this work is in progress. So as we map this back to the pathways, the milestones, we'll be looking at that data, trying to make some recommendations and look at where those indicators, those success measures should be. We'll bring that back to you once we have all our test data in the fall with some recommendations about where we see those indicators, our success measures aligning, and then create, really throughout our system, some tieback back to our strategic plan so that we can have those indicators reporting to the board publicly about how our students are performing.
Yes, Mark. So on the first of the pathway measures, what are the units associated with that?
So this is percentage of students who have met the cut score. And the test is not scaled, so it's really raw scores and the number of items you get correct that are, is behind the scenes here. And the linkage indicated that if you had 20 items correct in the beginning of kindergarten assessment or higher, you were on track for the two-year college readiness. If you had 40 items correct, you, well, were on track for the new MCA. And I left that out. But 80, if you had 80 or higher, you were on track for the college readiness. And so the original standard, you could actually qualify as ready for kindergarten if you knew your letters. So if you could identify, you know, 26 uppercase letters and 26 lowercase letters, you'd get 50 points right there. But even getting half of those letters right would qualify you. Now with this new standard at 80, the college readiness standard, you would also have to know some of the sounds. And it's called phonemic awareness, identify the beginning sounds in a word and what rhymes with what. And so it's a little more advanced, it's still pre-literacy, but research has shown that you not only need to know your letters, but you also need to be getting this phonemic awareness and alphabetic principle. And so it would be a slightly higher benchmark than just the basics of knowing your letters.
So clearly, because you've got percentages there, the scale on all of these is zero to 100. Is that correct?
Oh, yeah, right. So this is percentage of students, which is the same way success measures were reported in the past.
So on that second measure then, the vision is that greater than 50% are scoring at that level? That's the meaning of that?
Yes, to get a B or better in, you know, four-year college.
Why, you know, both the first and the third, the reading scores are bouncing around a little bit? Whereas on the second, that reading score is an upward trend. Why is that?
You will see somewhat different trends at different points of the distribution. And, you know, as you may see more, what we've seen with No Child Left Behind in some districts and schools, when I've looked at the data, is that we've seen a lot of progress at the bottom, but we've actually seen percentages at the top add, actually come down or stay flat. Most of No Child Left Behind emphasis is on getting students up to a minimum. So I used to do this 2020 analysis in Minneapolis where you'd look at the top 20% of the distribution in the bottom. And we did see, you know, the schools are really knocking the ball out of the park. We're making progress at both levels. And that's why I think it's kind of cool to monitor at both the high level and the basic level at the same time, because you can actually be increasing the bottom without increasing the top. If this was a mean, that, I think I know where you're going. If this was like an arithmetic average, then you would typically see the averages going up at all levels. But since this is percentage of students at a cut score, the distribution is actually changing faster at one end than the other.
So the second measure is not directly correlated to the first and the third?
It's correlated in the sense that you tend to see both go up at the same time. But in this case, it's, it is possible for you to make progress at one and not the other.
Why doesn't it do that on the math? The math score looks like it's more directly correlated to the first and the third. It's behaving the same way as those.
Yeah, distributions are very interesting. Most times, you know, this is kind of esoteric maybe, but most times evaluators just report out means. But it's interesting to look at the whole distribution of the scores, because you can have a mean that's represented by really a ton of kids at the bottom and a ton of kids at the top, or you could have the same mean be a normal distribution. And so especially when you have like a bimodal distribution with lots of kids at the bottom and the top, those, they can behave somewhat differently. In fact, I've noted from Bloomington data, like I was looking at Hispanic students today on the kindergarten assessment, we have a ton of kids at the bottom and a ton of kids at the top. And it tends to vary by frame, reduce lunch status. So the kids who are in poverty are kind of at the bottom, not yet in terms of kindergarten readiness. The kids who are middle class or upper class are more at the top of the distribution. So these can behave somewhat independently.
I guess the only comment I have is the second one is not necessarily as intuitive as the other two and inasmuch as part of the reason we have these success measures is to communicate to our stakeholders. I'm not certain how stakeholders might respond to that one.
Well, this hopefully will be something that families will really get used to with that rainbow, because they'll be seeing their own child's progress versus the two-year college enrollment and the college readiness. And so I think they'll get a sense of these being kind of, you know, different levels of achievement. And yet, it is very unique to report out at two different levels. And that's one of the reasons that I'm sharing it with you. If it's not something that you relate to, I think would be an advancement in terms of understanding, we can go back to linking to the college, to the MCAs, or we could link to something else that's in the middle, like on track for four-year college, but not necessarily the college readiness. It's possible to link to just one of those colors on the rainbow instead of linking to two, and it'd be less complicated.
It's just that when your vision is greater than 50%, that doesn't look particularly lofty as a goal.
Yeah, that's the problem when you set really high standards. It would be pretty amazing actually to have 50% of your kids hitting that college readiness target, which is at about the 75th percentile nationally, I think. It doesn't on its own look like a high goal. You could put 100 there, you could say 100, but I kind of like to set up SMART goals that are stretch goals, but they're makeable. Whereas when I was in Minneapolis, at one point, all the goals were 100%. And so we expected 20% increases for the kids at the bottom per year. So you could get up to the goal in five years. That's not.
So your proposal would be that we would drop the first and have the second and third?
And replace with second and third. And we could look at what the vision would be, the growth, et cetera. I'm not wedded to those numbers.
Probably would need a fair amount of narrative around it.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Looking for if there are other responses? Any further questions?
Thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight.
Thanks, Lou.
Appreciate it. And next, at the meeting with the superintendent on Wednesday, Mark and I asked for some status report information on where things stand with bullying, discussions about a policy for the district and especially in light of what was going out the legislature. We had in abance, taking any action, having anything brought forward. And now I guess we might be at a point where we'd know what our next step might be. So appreciate you taking the time out of your busy schedule to be here tonight. And is, provide the update as you see fit.
Okay, thank you Chair Culver, Superintendent Fujitaki, members of the board. Yeah, we know a lot more today than we did last week when the requests came through. And what we know is last night, today, we learned that the Safe School, Safe and Supportive Schools Bill, or the Bullying Prevention Bill that the legislature was potentially acting on was not going to get acted on. The Senate could not vote on it today. So there will be no state bullying prevention law changing at this point going forward, at least through this legislative session. As Chair Culver mentioned, we had done quite a bit of work actually. I along with other folks in the district and with Julie Herzog from Pacer's National Bullying Prevention Center to come up with a policy to bring to the board for readings. And we, you know, have that waiting in the wings and we don't really need to do more with it. So what I would propose is getting on a board agenda very quickly, working with Deb Bunkhold to get on an agenda and bring that forward for the board to start reviewing. It's not like we need to go back and do a lot with that, we're ready to go with it. I also wanted to give just a brief update on what you'll be seeing when that comes to you and to put it in sort of terms of major tenants of that bullying prevention policy. And I narrowed it to four. There's obviously a lot going on in that policy, but the four major tenants of the policy, the first I would say would be the definition of bullying. When Ms. Herzog was working, and she also co-chaired the Governor's Bullying Prevention Task Force a year ago, and her reports to me and to others about that task force, the definition, coming up with the definition for bullying was the single toughest thing that they really worked on. It's a big discussion, there's lots of opinions about what the definition of bullying is. I've got one that I'll present to you in this proposed policy, but I'm sure that will have more discussion. It's, that's a big part of the policy. The second major tenant of the policy, I would say, would be the prevention system that we'll be proposing. A team to support that prevention system, what that looks like, we can get into greater detail. But I would say the prevention system will be a second major tenant of the policy. The third major tenant, I would say, is reporting procedures. And after a bullying incident is reported, how are we investigating it? So reporting and investigation would be the third major tenant. And I would say the fourth and final major tenant of the policy is staff development, training. How are we going to make sure all of our staff understand what that definition that we agree to is, how things get reported, what the follow-up is going to be? So staff development. So again, four major tenants of that policy you'll be seeing soon would be the definition, prevention system, reporting procedures and training. And that's my update at this point.
Yes, Lou.
I know you're very knowledgeable on the topic. From your point of view, what is the hang-up in the Senate that they're not moving?
Well, I'd be, I'd turn into a political commentator or analyst if I give you too much of an answer. I think there's disagreement in the Senate and probably other places about the scope of the policy and the reporting procedures of the policy. And folks from different parties have different ideas about what's appropriate to be in that. And I think that would be my theory of kind of why it got hung up.
So they're happy with the 27-word law?
I don't know if anybody's real happy with that, but, and again, I'm not that immersed in the what's going on at the legislature to give you a full rundown. But I do think that some at the legislature felt like what they were proposing was some overreach maybe.
The reporting part of it?
That was a big piece, yeah. And honestly, that was, had it gone through as it was, you know, in the most recent form of legislation, that would have presented some challenges for us, but we would have dealt with it.
Want to give us a sneak preview of what your definition of bullying will be?
It's pretty long.
In your own words?
A lot of it came, is going to come out of what Julie Herzog and that Governor's Task Force put together. I thought I might get asked that, but I'm not going to read the whole thing to you, but you'll see it soon. I like to keep people on edge, no, I actually don't. But, you know, it'll be, it'll cover verbal, physical, cyberbullying, bullying that happens outside of school. I actually gave a presentation last Tuesday night. The League of Women Voters had a bullying prevention forum that was held over at the Northwest Sciences Building where I presented along with Julie Herzog from Pacer Center and Barton Erickson from Cornerstone. And some of the things I discussed there was no matter what this policy looks like in Bloomington, if you bully kids and it has an impact on their education, we'll deal with it. So it's not just bullying that happens at school, it could be bullying that happens, you know, out in the community in the evening, whatever the case may be. So it will cover the various types of bullying. It will lay out that we, bullying is often motivated but not limited to biases, prejudice, race, color, religion, a long list of things that go along with that.
Is harassment part of that?
Interestingly enough, in what the legislature was looking at, cyberbullying and harassment were, fell under a category that they were calling prohibited conduct. That'll be a discussion we can have when that policy comes forward, how we want to look at that. We have a harassment policy right now. There's definitely, you know, a relationship with bullying and the harassment policy.
You've made just a comment about if they are bullying away from the school property or out in the community. We, the school district, will address that?
Well, we address it if it has an impact on the educational environment. So, you know, I could give you hypotheticals, but if what happened out in the community carries into the school the next day and there are behaviors going on because of that, or kids who are in the office because they're upset because of it and they're missing out on educational opportunities, we have an obligation to follow up on that, yes.
I'm not arguing one way or the other, but I reflect back on my career that when there was a school bus fight at the end of the bus route, what's the school district policy do? Does the school district address that? I mean, when it's, we had the city bus system and there was a fight at the bus stop three, five miles away.
Right.
What does our school district?
The policy that, draft policy that I'll bring to you to discuss will cover that and would, you know, state in that policy that if an incident happens on a school bus or at a school bus stop, that's still part of their school day and we would, we would deal with it.
What if they weren't on the bus and walking home a mile and a half from here and had a fight?
Well, then again, that kind of goes into the, does it have an impact on the educational part of their day when they come back the next day? It might, hard to answer.
I guess I just don't want the school district to get involved in things that are happening in the community that have nothing to do with the schools and so forth.
Yep, I understand the concern.
But that's going to become a slippery slope with all the cyber stuff that's going on, because kids are posting stuff on Facebook that's affecting kids when they come to school.
But for example, you don't want the school district to get involved in a fight that happens on a Saturday evening in the community, even though it's going to walk into the building Monday morning.
I'm guessing that once you, once you review the policy, you'll be considering also the use of technology in the school during school time. And I'm saying that because, you know, sometimes kids can be a little mischievous and like take pictures of somebody, you know, during passing time or... There's things that can happen that can contribute to some bullying while they're at school or outside of the school.
Yep, yep, there will be a definite technology component. Yep, yep, there there will be a definite technology component to that and we'll certainly be discussing that, yep.
And are you considering or is it part of the plan to have input from students while you're developing this? Not not policy, but prevention, probably?
Uh, in the prevention aspects of things, yeah, absolutely. And and when I was presenting at that forum a week ago, I I had a a long list of of bullying prevention activities taking place in the district and and probably half of them were, you know, I don't know about half, but a lot of them were student-led or student-involved activities going on, yep.
Eric, I I read just a real quick, I think it was a three, three paragraph blurb on the news today about the author of the anti-bullying bill pulled it and said, you know, this isn't the end of this, it's coming back and, you know, mark my words, one of those things. I don't know if it was just political posturing or if he really meant it. I hope he meant it in some sense. Do you know, is, and you may have answered this already, is the policy that you've worked so hard on, does that line up? Have you had a chance to look at any of the language that's proposed that was on the table and now off?
Yeah.
But they're threatening to keep it on?
Yep. I I believe it will resurface again at the legislature. A lot of what was in the proposed language, both House and Senate versions, came directly from that Governor's Bullying Prevention Task Force, which, I don't mean to say her name a million times, but Julie Herzog co-chaired that thing and then she helped us with our policy. So I, you know, it all flows. A lot of the language or a lot of the thoughts that came out of that Governor's Task Force are are helping guide our policy or our proposed policy as well as what was in the in the legislature. So yes, to answer your question.
Yeah, I just would hate to have you reinvent the wheel.
Yeah, which is why we were waiting to, you know, see if the legislature acted on this so we didn't have to come back and and adjust, but we need to move forward, so.
I'll be, I'm sure I'll have a bunch of questions, but I'm going to hold back now until we see the presentation.
Sure.
Thanks.
Do we have any recent Bloomington-specific data on how pervasive bullying is in our schools and any trend information that shows whether it's increasing or decreasing over time?
Uh, we don't have, I couldn't tell you that tonight, no. Our 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 discipline tracking system does have a category for for bullying events. What I think will be very helpful for our district moving forward, once we get this policy completed, is we'll have a definition of bullying because I don't know that it's always an apples-to-apples comparison. It's it's, you know, somewhat in the eye of the beholder in in how it gets reported into the system. So probably not right now, but in the future, yeah, we will, yep.
Anything further? Eric, thanks again. Appreciate you spending time here this evening. Glad we could get you out of here by 7:30.
Thank you, appreciate it.
And then we have kind of a combined topic here. Number three is our financing plan for school safety and security and technology. So we have combined those in terms of what we're looking at approaching as a way to consolidate our new efforts in in those areas. And we have opportunities and to ask questions, as some of you have taken the opportunity to do by by email. And I believe that with Next Technology as well, we have had the opportunity, each of us, I met individually last week and with John and and I think everyone else also, as I understand, I had a chance to sit down with him and speak one-on-one as as well as some of the written questions. So before we move into that, the Superintendent has said he'd like to introduce the the topic. And then we're open for further discussion and questions. And since we're moving things along right pretty quickly here, I'm hopeful that we will not have too extensive a meeting, go much later than our usual meeting time.
Thank you, Chair Culver. I'll start this topic by sharing for the benefit of the viewing audience and the school board, my perspective on where we are in our discussions about the various plans being considered by the board. Today, we have had several meetings where the plans were shared in written and presentation format. The plans are the Safety and Security Plan, the Next Technology for Learning Plan, and the Financing Plan that is designed to provide the needed funding for these two first reference plans. We've answered board members' questions in writing and verbally. We hope our responses have provided clarity needed by the board. Our other hope is that the board is ready to move to a discussion among the board members about their support for these plans. To further prepare the board for tonight's discussion, I'll ask Rick to share his responses to questions about a possible for a referendum. Today, Rick Hoffman met with Bill Morris of Decision Resources and they videotaped Bill's responses. I'll turn it over, Rick, and if you could start by sharing why Bill needed to be videotaped, please.
So Lieutenant Fujitaki, Chair Culver, members of the board, thank you very much. Bill sends his regrets, but he is a very busy person right now. We do have him or did have him queued up for next Monday's meeting. He is meeting with Chaska, City of Chaska, this evening on some survey results. He has been working with a number of school districts this spring on survey work as well as pre-referendum work. So he did graciously agree to be videotaped to today. So we posed a number of questions that you all posed to us over the last couple of weeks with respect to the referendum. So what I'm going to do is, I'll preface each time that Bill talks, it's not very long, his responses are fairly short, to the point, succinct, share with you the question that I posed to him because that is not on tape, and then Bill will go from there as his response. Because there's some feedback on the the sound, we, when I'm done talking, we need to turn the mics down so that you can hear Bill, we can turn it up. So first question we posed to Bill, as as you, members of the school board, consider or weigh the option of seeking voter approval on a school safety and security plan and the Next Technologies for Learning Plan. In November, I asked Bill to share his findings and or insights on voter interest in general and then from his work in the metro area. So he really responded in two ways. The first one was in some of his current insights on technology and school safety referendum options or considerations that are out there. And then overall, what is the tack, the climate around tax increases?
Well, we're working with seven districts across the greater, across the greater metropolitan area that are all going and or looking at, anyway, of the tech, technology funding and also safety and security funding. And what we're finding first is that with respect to safety and security funding, that tends to be the most supported item right across the metro area in terms of a a tax increase for those purposes. That can be either personnel or it can be for changes to entrances, those kinds of things. But given the events of Newtown, that certainly has impacted Minnesota voters. With respect to technology, we're finding a differentiation now between whether we're looking at personal devices or whether we're looking at infrastructure such as increased bandwidth. And it's infrastructure, for the most part, that tends to be the most popular item. Again, it depends on what the tax increase is, but by and large, people are basically saying, use our funding in order to increase the ability of the schools to use internet-based course materials, new experimental curricula, whatever. But it's the infrastructure that seems to be key this year rather than personal devices for the students. In terms of the mix-up of the two, it provides in those districts that are coming forward with a referendum, a very, very solid support base. Putting the two together in particular, judiciously so, showing the linkage between the two, we see margins in favor of a tax increase running as high as 70%. Certainly, the tax climate has improved quite a bit. There's still some confusion out there with respect to the funding that's coming back from the state, which will need to be clarified in districts that are going for referenda. Is it new funding? Is it paying back the shift? And what exactly does that mean? But what we're finding more and more is that opposition level that we were encountering of about 30% has now shrunk into about 20%, if not a little bit lower, among those folks that say, I would not vote for a tax increase for schools under any circumstance.
The next question. The next question we posed to Bill is, based on the previous discussions at the board around one question or two, asked for Bill, and I should probably provide for you, Bill Morris and Decision Resources have been around for many, many years. They're probably the foremost research firm in the metro area across and nationally. They have a special affinity for Bloomington. They've done almost all of our community surveys and referendum surveys. So he has a tremendous wealth of knowledge and insights, not only to the metro area but also Bloomington. So in this question, I asked for his expertise with respect to having one question or two on a referendum ballot.
Can we, can we ask a question before you do that? Are his, are his comments reflecting general metro feelings or has he done some research already in the Bloomington-specific area?
The responses to the first two questions were the, is the metro area? He isn't, he has not yet done any survey work for us on a, any potential referendum. There are, Decision Resources approaches the referendum in two ways. If school boards are struggling to make a decision, they, some school districts will employ Decision Resources to do a temperature survey, what they call a dipstick survey, to assess where their community may be around certain, certain areas that the school board is considering for a referendum. But typically, what Bill and his associate Pete Leatherman will will share with you is that it's best to do that dipstick survey after the board has made its decision because then you can test the key messages, you can test the appetite, the level of support that you might get. One thing that Bill did not mention, and we did talk about off-camera, was the fact that as proposed in our financing plan is a no-tax increase, your odds for success grow exponentially because at at a point where you heard him talk about the the level of support for tax increases, the common knowledge or wisdom would tell you that a no-tax increase is supportive even more. So again, this is a response to one or two questions on the referendum ballot.
What we're finding, and in particular with respect to the two topics that you're talking about, is that there's a real synergy between safety and security on the one hand and technology on the other. So actually, when we've tested in a number of districts, whether they go for two questions or for one question combined, the one question combined is supported a little bit higher than each of the two by themselves. Because of course, if you're talking about one combined question, you can focus on those synergies, and that seems to resonate well with most of the electorate.
We posed to Bill was, again, he has worked on lots of referendums, so using his expert advice, responds to the importance of having unanimous support by school boards on a referendum request as opposed to a split board, again, addressing a question or a concern that came up over the last couple of weeks.
We have a rule of thumb on that, on the vote coming off of the board in terms of sending it to the public. And I have to answer that really in two different parts. The first is, what we found is that if one vote is against the package going out, it reduces the probability of passage by one-third. If there are two votes going against it, it reduces the probability by almost three-quarters. So a split board sends a very, very negative message to most of the electorate out there. And it gives people another reason besides tax increase or what have you to vote no. If the board's split on it, why should I approve this now? Second part, though, is that people also expect to see the board members out there talking about and actively engaging in campaigning for the question. If the board is invisible or absent, that also raises a host of question among those swing voters that in Bloomington are particularly key to the success of the passage of anything.
Okay, and finally, the board is author, the the board, state statute, I should say, with respect to a board referendum vote authorization is August 23rd, as we shared last week. There has been some questions as to when's the best time for a board to vote, when's the best time to get information shared out in the community. As you heard, when we started the presentations a month or so ago, we talked about three legs of a stool. First leg being the plans, the school safety and security recommendations, the Next Technologies for Learning Plan. The second leg of the stool was the financing plan, which Rod and and others and associates presented. The third leg is really the, if, should the board move towards a referendum, is the community campaign, the information that is shared with the community to build the support within the community. As you know, once the board takes the official vote, school districts cannot, school district personnel cannot advocate on school district time for the referendum. We can share information and factual information at that. School board members are not held within that same requirement, and I'm not, don't want to speak for Mr. Holman, but school board members can advocate for or against a referendum. So in this last question, what we posed to Bill was to share with us his opinion why it may be advantageous for the board to act now as opposed to waiting until the statutory deadline.
Okay, so the question that we're looking at really talks about timing of a campaign, but also the type of campaign. And let's begin with the type of campaign first. A stealth campaign just doesn't work in this day and age. It's absolutely impossible to quote, "sneak one through," unquote. Local media will be covering it. The the dailies certainly will be covering it. They do a nice roundup of what's going on across the metropolitan area. And in Bloomington, you have to remember that Bloomington is still pretty much three small towns together. And there will be a lot of talk going on among the west side, the east side, and the central portion. So I don't see the practicality of being able to run a stealth campaign, per se. Now, in terms of the type of campaign, the timing of the campaign, what we're finding this year is that it's better to get out earlier than it is to go later. It used to be that you could do a campaign in in six weeks. That seems to be no longer the case. While people tend to be in a better mood, they also want credible information. And you spoke about one item in particular in this question, and that's the technology plan. People want to know, what does the technology plan entail? That doesn't mean that we have to count the number of routers or the the number of other types of things that might be installed in the buildings, but it it needs really a fleshing out in terms of, okay, we're going for some infrastructure. These are the kinds of things that will help students undertake once that infrastructure is in place. Why do we need more bandwidth? Well, it's because of these kinds of programs and also the potential use of the programs in new curricula or updating even programs that are currently offered. And that takes a little bit of time to get out there. You have to go beyond simply the inventory and move, in particular in this district, which is so program-oriented, into how is it going to impact student achievement.
At this point, I would turn it back to Superintendent Fujitaki.
Thanks, Rick. In tonight's board packet, there is a copy of a proposed resolution calling for an election this fall, and it's to be presented at next week's board meeting. The resolution proposes a Capital Projects referendum election this fall in November. We hope the board tonight preps for taking action on that proposed resolution. Turn it back to you, Chair Culver.
Thank you. All right, does anyone have some questions? Yes, Lael, did you want to start?
Rick, we are at the start, I can call Rick, right? Rick, okay, call me a lot. Rick, we are at the start. I can call Rick, right? Rick, okay. Call me a lot. The dipstick thing that you mentioned, once we pass this resolution, are we, you, able to hire Mr. Morris to do the dipstick for us, or is that prohibited?
No, that would be our intent. And as I noted, it really would be for us to get an assessment of where our voters are. We'll be able to determine, as Mr. Morris talks about east, central, and west, again, he's got a tremendous amount of history in Bloomington, and any data that he gets, he'll be able to do comparisons to previous years. And also the level of support for technology and safety, security. And then finally, those key messages that will be important for us to share and resonate with parents and community voters.
And then just a quick question for Mr. Holman. If we pass this within the month down the road, after we find out what the results of the dipstick is, can we rescind it? We, of course, could, couldn't we? If, let's just say it came back really tough, thirty-four, thirty people in favor, thirty percent of the people in favor, seventy against it, and the odds of us passing it are nil, could we rescind it?
Yes, you can. I'm sure there's a drop dead date, though, when it goes to the election officials and gets, probably at some point, you can't.
Would it be that August date that Rick was talking about?
I think it would be.
Well, nobody else is going to speak up. I have a question. I don't want to dominate. I think Mr. Morris mentioned something about, he found that the general public was generally in favor of infrastructure, not so big on personal devices. What, Mr. Weiser, what percentage of this budget is for infrastructure?
So, my response to that was, I just, this is the first time I've seen Mr. Morris speak on these topics, too. My response to that would be that we are beyond the point of, what we're doing is the second generation of infrastructure upgrades. Many districts are still in their first generation of infrastructure upgrades. In the late 90s, we did our own fiber ring, which was a large infrastructure investment. About five years ago, with the 2007 referendum, we did a fairly substantial infrastructure investment in terms of putting wireless in all of our buildings. That has served us very well, but part of this next plan is to take that wireless infrastructure and move it to the next level. We're hitting capacity in all of our buildings, and so we're talking about, I'm gonna, I think I've got these numbers, about $450,000 worth of infrastructure in the wireless realm in each of the first two years. Secondary buildings in the first wave, primary buildings in the second wave. Moving us from wireless, ubiquitous wireless, no matter where you walk in a school, to an access point per classroom to handle a load of thirty devices per classroom, a one-to-one environment.
So our infrastructure is about ten percent of this plan?
Other pieces of infrastructure, yeah, perhaps. That's not a bad estimate.
So we're fighting what Mr. Morris is saying is the most...
I think what I heard him say was that the most popular type of technology referendum is in infrastructure, one that invest heavily in infrastructure. I think because we are past that infrastructure stage, we're ready to take that next step into personalized devices. I would suspect that other districts who've solved the infrastructure problems, they're going to be wrestling with the personal devices question in two years, three years, five years down the road. I think we're one step ahead in that evolutionary path, in my opinion.
Thank you. I think the superintendent is asking the board, each of us, to give him a pulse of where we are coming individually.
Please.
And that's, and I would tell the superintendent, the cabinet, the public, I suppose, that I'm most likely in favor of both of them. I do have a problem with putting both of those technology and the safe schools initiative under one vote, one yes, one no. I mean, I still would like to see those separated. Again, I've told various people that in my career at the legislature, I don't know how many times it was I had to hold my nose to vote for something, because every time I wanted something strongly, I also had to vote for something I really wasn't very happy with. And that's exactly what's happening here. I think there's people in the community that would be 100% as I am for the safety thing, and might be a little bit more iffy on the technology. But now, because they want safety, they have to take technology with it. And so I'm still hung up on the one question versus two questions. So for your benefit, you can count me in in supporting both of them, after I see if I can get one question or two questions. Okay?
Thank you.
I'll share my thoughts. I don't want to split the questions. I'd like it to be one. I like them. Yeah, I think it'll have a better chance of succeeding if it's, if we stay with one. And really, I don't have too many issues enough for me not to go out and speak positively in the public.
Well, I'll echo Dick's feelings. I'm for one question, and I support both.
Looks like we're going around the table.
That's what it looks like.
I guess I'm not fully supportive yet. I'm still concerned that we don't have metrics around student achievement and the technology piece. I know there are metrics in the plan, but they kind of go to access, I would say. There are smart goals around access. I think we need some smart goals around, is this really making a difference with respect to our kids and their academic achievement? And we need an off-ramp. I mean, that's the off-ramp, is let's not spend, you know, a few million a year if we aren't seeing an indication that it's actually improving academic achievement. And, you know, I've been doing my homework, and I really am having a hard time finding anything in the literature that definitively says that, you know, one-to-one computing is going to improve academic achievement. There's certainly lots of things out there that would suggest that it might be a distraction from academic achievement. So that's one of my concerns. And related to that, I'm still hopeful of getting a little more insight from the teaching staff as to sort of the benefits they see of this, and, you know, sort of the pros and cons.
So as I hear you, I hear you saying that you'd be iffy on technology and fully supportive of safety, and you'd maybe support my division.
I haven't finished yet. No, I think that if it goes, it's got to be one question. So, sorry. And with respect to the safety and security, I believe when Tim and I met with the superintendent, we did ask you if we could see the rest of the focus group or the survey data, particularly from the counseling staff and the social workers that were part of that. I think Tim indicated that those folks must have had a lot to say about staffing, but we haven't seen that. Do you recall mentioning that?
I don't recall that question, that request. So what specifically do you want?
Well, so for several meetings here now, I've been talking about the staffing part of the safety and security plan. And when we talked to you earlier this, or last week, I guess, Tim just made the comment that when those surveys were done, when the focus groups were conducted, surely there were some comments made about the need for additional staffing, and sort of the human, the human side of safety and security. And we'd like to see that. I'd like to see that.
Are you talking about pairs and mental health agents and so forth?
Well, as I've said before, I think what we're looking at here is half a plan. It's the structural improvements part of a safety and security plan, but the other part of safety and security is what we're doing in the building with our students in terms of counseling them and, you know, dealing with concerns they have, mental health issues, what have you. I completely understand. Don't want anybody to get upset here. I understand that's not part of this funding, you know, this referendum, but for me, it's an essential part of understanding and where we're headed. And then just related to that is, you know, I appreciate the responses to the questions that were posed, but the one thing I am interested in is, what's the timeline for doing these? Well, the comment was made that Mr. Kaufman and Mr. Melby are working on the mental health piece. What's the timeline for that? That's what I'd like to know.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Well, I'm next, as we're going around the table, so I feel that I should say I'm pretty much on board with what is being proposed now in terms of a financing plan for two different initiatives that require investment in real estate, capital, tools, technology tools. I've expressed my concerns or questions about actually having the software necessary to support continual use of technology, or even if that's, in some cases, the best way to teach. But the way that the projects, the Next Tech is being phased in, looks to me like the students are most likely to benefit, and the instructional staff that done the most preparation are the ones that will be rolling it out in the first year. And then we have a three-year plan, and I think we'll go back to my example of making my garden. I think this is a garden. It's going to be evolving as we're bringing out the different elements, and we will get some feedback. We'll hear from focus groups, both formal and informal, as we get the feedback as to how things are proceeding, and what is the best way to use a technology. I certainly don't think that having a goal of having students tethered 24/7 to an electronic device so that they can access it anywhere, anytime, is necessarily going to ensure any kind of improvement in student performance. And as Mark suggested, and my experience would suggest, sometimes it's a distraction. There are needs for other things that schools teach, but there also is the need for students to learn how to interface with the technology. There are the, whether you want to call them 21st century learning skills, or other things having to do with their comfort with using technology and learning what is appropriate, losing, learning how it is a resource for them. Increasingly, education, instruction is moving towards the teacher being a person who is a, maybe a traffic flow facilitator. It's not the teacher's job to always know the answer. As a matter of fact, that's probably not, at a certain level, very good teaching. Once students get past third grade, and we have that math and reading and writing skills that we've been emphasizing on students having, then they start asking some why questions. We start asking them some why questions, and that's when they can more effectively use a technology to both find some answers and to express themselves. And if that's where our technology is being used, rather than saying this is a better way of teaching, then I think that's real appropriate. And for Bloomington to be able to take the leadership by being able to afford to propose this referendum now, and having the, hopefully, the good communication among staff, that they've made the commitment to make this work and are prepared to measure how it's making a difference, it'll be interesting to be that district that is looking to be the best at doing this kind of initiative. So I welcome the opportunity. We will have to be good at explaining it, probably better than I am at explaining it tonight, in order to be out engaged in the community this fall to explain why we feel that this is an appropriate direction to go. But I'm in favor.
Thank you.
Yeah, I like what Tim said, pretty much, but I would like to hear or have a little more discussion with our superintendent.
Paul?
About the whole thing.
What would you like to hear on that?
Well, I would like to discuss it with you. I mean, I'm not talking to her right now.
Right, behalf of the media, we can.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, okay. With respect of technology, I would say that we definitely cannot take a step back in our classrooms, right? I mean, there's already a lot going on, a lot that's happening in the classroom with the use of technology, the use of computers, the laptops, and the amount of homework that the kids are doing at home, definitely can see the benefit of students having their own Chromebook, having their own device, having that independence, and that possibility, even while they're at home, of really being able to use their own device at the time when they need it, without fighting with their siblings for the only one that they might have at home when they need to do homework. So I do see a benefit to that. I do see a benefit for the teachers as well, you know, as you can use more resources and have the kids explore more stuff at home, and have students, you know, have students be able to access classes that they missed for some reason. And we have students who miss school a lot because of illness, or family situations, or trips. So, yeah, there's benefits to it. I'm very positive about that side of it. I do still have my concerns, you know, related to access, but we're getting reassurance from our administration, and I trust that, you know, this whole access issues are going to be looked at in deep, and that we're going to be resolving those as the days are going by, or years are going by. If we're talking about four percent of students not being able to have internet access at this point, I believe it is important that we continue to monitor that number and to make sure, year after year, that we're really providing everybody with that access. Now, obviously, it cannot wait for too long, because every single day that a student doesn't have access to some class, or, you know, their homework, then it becomes a problem, and then we're just giving the gap the opportunity to grow. And we don't want that to happen. I also think we need to continue to closely monitor what's going on in the classroom with the use of those, you know, how is this going to affect the teachers in terms of the amount of time that they're going to be putting into this? How are we going to support our teachers as well, and what kind of expectations, realistic expectations we're going to have on our teachers? All areas are different. All of them call for different needs, and I think it's important that we continue to support everybody, not only our students and our parents, but also our teachers in this. And I'm positive that, you know, we'll help them. Parent engagement is a big piece, again, when it comes to this, because we're talking about, again, bringing a device home. The first thing a child does, and I know it, because I know that when my kids are able to have access to a computer, if they can, you know, the first thing they'll do when they come home would either be the TV or the computer. That's just almost like, wow, we're back home, you know, from a long day. We need to do something else, you know, especially in the wintertime. Otherwise, we'll go outside. But I can see how many kids, especially those children who have parents who are working all day, different jobs, they're not at home, they're going to be coming to their laptops, to their Chromebooks. And if they have access to certain websites, if they have access to games and to videos and all of that, that can also become... and all of that, that can also become a problem because that can affect academics. So, I would, I would request that we make sure that maybe those devices also have fun games that are educational games, you know? That they have some links to websites where they can find that fun that they're looking for, but that are actually educational, things that are meaningful and worth it for them. I know they'll have the opportunity to go and access their homework, but there would all, there will not always be an adult who will be able to make sure that the kids are actually doing their homework. So, that, again, the impact that that can have in academics can be big. Like I said before, parent engagement is a big piece of it, so that calls for a very strong parent engagement program. And that's, that's kind of what I expect too, you know, that we all work, continue to work together on supporting all those initiatives and making sure that our plans are working, that we continue to monitor, and that we make the changes that are necessary. Safety and security, well, that, I think that's, that's pretty obvious, you know? We all want the best for our kids. We're all, we want the best for them, and we want them to be safe. So, I think that's kind of hard to, to not say it. It's, it's not something to support. I will support that as well. I guess that's all I have to say for now.
Well, thank you very much for this, for this open discussion by the board. As a follow-up to this discussion, I will respond in writing to the mental health questions from Mark. First is information from focus groups, staffing standards, and timing. And I'll schedule the time to meet with you, Arlene. Is there anything else the board needs from the administration?
Did you say metrics around academic achievement?
Sure.
It's important to me that the board has had the opportunity to, to ask questions, sometimes in a rather repetitive way, I'm sure, in order to clarify that members feel that this is a worthwhile effort in going out to the community and requesting authorization to spend money. Also worthwhile effort in terms of what the results may be academically, not just in terms of the, the capital budget, the equipment budget and, and construction budget. It's extremely important that we've had the chance to emphasize several things repeatedly that I then think become ingrained in the process. I appreciate the response to the questions about access and the concern about access. If this community were truly to be wired so that every student would have, have access to the internet as needed in order to use their portable device, we will accomplish something remarkable. And I feel that it is important, I think most board members feel it's important, that when we're stating that it is important to us that every child succeed, that that also means with the use of technology. We make it possible for every child to succeed. So, I'm sure the board is going to want to really drill down on that, and the response we've had, I think, has been very good and has shown a shared concern, whether it's a reality now or 14 months or 24 months from now. But it obviously is a mission that we're on to make a difference and be better than other school districts that are looking to implement this kind of a plan. This isn't about bring your own device and use your own resources. It's about providing devices and providing the resources for students. Another thing I think has been made very clear is the concern about knowing that this is what's best for students as students, that it has to be about making a difference in how children learn, young adults learn, and that we know for a fact that good things are happening. I think it's also important, as we've been expressing as a board and as we've been hearing back from administrative staff, that we have buy-in from those people who are interfacing with the students, that our instructors, our paraprofessionals, everyone in the system has a recognition that this is a paradigm change and that they have bought into it and that we want to do it in a compassionate way because it makes more work for everybody to have to retool what they're doing in, both in the materials they're using and in the way they're teaching and the way they're responding and the turnaround time for what they're learning. There too, I have the confidence that the response we're getting is that those board concerns for being the best at those things are shared by administrative staff. And we will be watching, and we will be looking to have regular updates and reports to know that those things are going on. And is there anything else any board member would want to emphasize that I've left out? Those, to me, are the, the most essential things that we've said. We want to be the best at accomplishing with these initiatives. Safety and security as well. I think the, the idea that we want to know what else was suggested might be improvements on school sites that are not just about the brick and mortar and cameras and whatever else we might do, but affecting people's behaviors and being aware that maybe the most risky behaviors are of those who are already within our buildings because they're part of the system, and there is something that has made them uncomfortable or they're acting out or is a catalyst for behavior of those who are already in the buildings. And many of the, the problems in schools have not been caused by outsiders entering into the building, but by family and by students and those that we know who have been affected in some way. And unfortunately, we're not getting any immediate help from the state. We're not getting immediate help from the federal government in terms of addressing those issues. So, I want to thank Rick, and I want to thank Paul as well and others who are involved in that for really focusing in and seeing what we can do for ourselves at this time. Again, anyone else have any comments or reactions here?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that when it comes to student achievement, that we make sure that we closely monitor the specific group of kids that we have that are already part of that big gap. And talking, you know, mostly about Somali kids, the Hispanic kids, we're already seeing a big gap there. And if we think about them and their families, their parents are working and they're not always with an adult, you know, they're with, they were older brothers and sisters. So, really need to make sure and pay close attention when it comes to, to that academic progress, if it's happening or it's not happening, or what, what exactly is happening with them.
That needs to be the bottom line, is this is the right thing to do educationally? I believe it is. Other contributions? You leave anything out? The other questions you have? Then we will be voting next week on a resolution in order to implement the recommendation. Thank you. Is there anything further if you come to the board tonight? If not, we're at the end of our agenda. Meeting is adjourned.
And what you call it every week, Plow. They're good.
Getting a lot of news about tornadoes, huh? Not good.
So, we will get more info about our...
Yeah.
For a moment. Was the news... Last couple years, Dix, for us.
Strong wind. I got a plow tie right in the middle.